Our next item is consideration for approval of the TISD Board Operating Procedures Annual Review. Members, you had the procedures emailed last week, also contained in the board book. This, you've had a chance to review. This does, this is an action item that does require approval. Yeah?
I may that we approve the board operating procedures for 21, 22.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Also in front of you, you have the document here that certifies that we have passed it. If you could sign it, date it, and pass it to Dr. Ott. But we'll just do it right now. Yeah, we'll get hers.
I can honestly tell you, all of you have better penmanship than I do.
I'm not sure about mine. Next item is future items of discussion. Oh, yeah, there it is. Is there any items we wish to place on a future board agenda? Okay. Item D is important dates, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Ott.
Okay, I'll go through these pretty quick. July 20th, we have our virtual district-wide baby shower, and this is an event that HR puts on for employees that are looking to start families. It's a really good event. I actually went to one, not because I'm trying to add to my family, but just to see what was going on, and it was really well done. And also, July 20th, I believe, is the, Christine helped me here, the last day that we will have the bond survey open. 5:00 PM that day, right? July 20th. And thank you for being at the last meeting as well. July 22nd through 23rd, one of those days, I'll be at the TASSA Leadership Summit, and that's where a bunch of superintendents get together and plan the next several years for TASSA. July 26th, we have our IB celebration at Temple High School at 6:00 PM. I would like to encourage you to attend that event for several reasons, but one probably most notably is that we have 100% graduation rate, and I think that is just fantastic and what I've been told the first time ever in Temple ISD for our IB program. July 28th is our Board Policy Committee. We're kicking that, actually, that got flipped, right, Eric? We skipped June and changed that with July. And then we do not have a facilities committee, right, Kent? And then August 4th is our third community engagement session over the bond. The last two, I think, have gone very well. We've really had good participation and great feedback and guidance and input, which those are the things that we've been after. Like I said, I appreciate all of you being there, and we'll have another well-planned session for that group, August 4th. August 9th is our regular board meeting. As you know, August is usually a pretty big board meeting. And then we have a special meeting or retreat, August 11th, and that meeting will talk about the bond and some of the results and packages and so forth. And then August 16th, we will have a group of citizens that will come present to you, and I believe that's the only item that we have planned for that meeting. And they're going to give a recommendation for a bond package to the board for your consideration. And that's all I have, Mr. Posey.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Ott. Item seven is the consent items. We have A through F5. What is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I may that we approve all items on the consent agenda as one.
Motion by Ms. Gallin. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you. Item eight is our action items. A is human resources. We do not have any items. B is curriculum instruction. B1 is bilingual ESL education program report, 2020 through 2021. Connie Cisneros. Thank you.
Good evening, board. How are you all today?
Good seeing you every, at least officially, once a year.
Right.
Officially, yeah.
I'm glad to be here. It's my little time here to come and shine a little bit for our department. So last year, we had a very busy year. Here's the clicker. And I want to start, what, just talking about the program types. We have under, it's like one big umbrella. We have the English language programs, and we have a bilingual program and the ESL program, and then we have newcomer programs for kids that are recent immigrants at both in elementary and secondary. ELs make up 13.5% of our TISD population, and that is, has grown over time. We used to sit around around 10%, and then all of a sudden, we had, we kind of bumped up a little bit there. Last year, we had a total of 1,118 kids at snapshot, and we've already started the testing process to identify more. Although that was high, it was actually seven students less than last year, so we only have a difference of seven kids over time there. Even with COVID, we tested 140 kids as of June of 2020, and that is actually lower than in the past, but we were still identifying kids for our program. And in 1920, we had 90 newcomer students, which are recent immigrants. This year, we only had 46, but you know, COVID just made all kinds of things, all the numbers changed for us there. As far as monitor students, these are kids that have gone through the bilingual or ESL program and have completed the program successfully, and we monitored them for four years now, and we have a total of 137 former ELs that we are monitoring and just checking on them a couple times a year, went through LPACs and things like that. Our state assessments, we have, we have hadn't had TellPass, which is our, the way that we monitor our kids in the past two years, so we had to come up with a way of measuring our language acquisition. So we utilize different things that we have here in the district, different assessments to analyze the program for language and content. So we use MAP and grade, which we are using already, and they are both available in English and Spanish to us, so we just utilize those assessments. They're norm reference assessments, and they assess the reading and writing skills. So our MAP, our measures between K2, you can see the comparison of Garcia and Thornton, those where we have our bilingual programs, and they all grew. And even though the bars are really close, that's still a lot of growth in reality there. With three through five, the same thing. We're comparing Garcia and Thornton, and not necessarily comparing them, it's just that's the way I came up with the data from beginning of the year to end of the year. And again, everybody made some good growth. However, when we're monitoring kids for reading progress, we use the grade in middle school and high school. The grade is an assessment that we, it's also norm referenced, and any student that we have that come in that are at the beginning or intermediate levels of speaking, reading, or writing, or listening, they're placed in an ESL course, and we monitor their process, their progress that way. This doesn't look like a lot here, but if you think about that, beginning of the year, on average, they started out reading at a fifth grade level, and these are middle school and high school kids, and over time, they're reading over eighth grade. Those are, that's the number of years that they've improved. Even though that number is small, I mean, you think about it, one grade level per year is kind of average, these kids grew about three grade levels. So what we're doing is working in our district. Our English language learner's graduation rate, that's an area that we need to work on, and that's across the board. We are, we are at 78.3% last year in graduation rate, and that's something that we're trying to figure out, what we need, what I need to do to help that process here. So I have to come up with, had to come up with some kind of a plan. I'm thinking, how am I going to get these kids to graduate? So our ESL plan for improvement, we have a plan that will include speaking and writing activities in the classrooms, and we are monitoring that through an assessment program at school. We have a plan for assessing and collecting data. Our goal is to increase the language acquisition, and then we're also implementing the Rosetta Stone for newcomers. That is totally different than what we normally have done. That's something separate, and the kids, it's extra for them, so it's not part of their grade or things like that. So we also have a lot of professional development that we provide to our teachers. We have a list there between programs and Imagine Learning. I-Lid is something that we contract through, through Pearson. And Esperanza training, we just had Dr. Hagan come from the Valley, and she provided face-to-face instruction for our teachers, and that was very well received. We did more of a calibration training, because we've had this training before, but our teachers are very excited, it's kind of like they come to see a movie star, because she's the author of the program, so they get excited every time we get her to come over here. We also have the contact, EL contact meetings. Everybody at Everest Campus has an EL contact person, so they come, and we train them six times a year on different things that come up. And then we have sheltered English overview, and then with Esperanza again, Wells, and then online training. We have an ongoing online training for ESL Academy, so we certify teachers through, so they can become ESL certified, and that is through TEA, and then I assist them as needed.
Esperanza is part of the support for the early literacy. I heard for our bilingual students, to make sure that they have a really strong foundation of getting awareness.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So word study phonics program calibration, that's what we was talking about. The bilingual pre-K teachers also participated, the ones from Meredith, and all kindergarten through fifth grade teachers that teach language, language arts came to the training as well. So that was, it's always fun to watch them do that. Human resources and recruitment, of course, with COVID, it was limited last year, but we did participate in some of those trainings. This past year, we had 16 teachers that we reimbursed for ESL certification, which is the highest we've ever done. So there's a real push for getting teachers ESL certified. As our numbers are growing, there's also a greater need for having teachers become ESL certified. So overall, you can see, you know, throughout the years, we started out a few years ago at five, and slowly crept up and down and up, and we ended up last year at 16. And just this afternoon, when I came in, I signed another one for reimbursement, so the first one for this year is going to go over to the high school, so yay. As you know, we used to use the performance-based monitoring system, and of course, zero was going to be, is the score we were going for, and we started out at a three, and we kind of danced around two and one, and we ended up at a one in 2019, which was, you know, it's okay, but of course, zero was the goal. But then they changed the rules on us, and now we switched over to RDA, which is the Results Driven Accountability. With RDA, we have some areas that we needed to work on, which are the graduation rate and dropout rate, and that's what we call, you know, getting a quote-unquote "hit," because our numbers were higher than the state. So I'm not sure what we need to do about that. So the kids aren't here, they drop out. So what do we do? I can't go back and ask them, because they're physically not here. So got my little thinking cap on and started thinking about, you know, how am I going to reach out? How am I going to fix this? So over time, we, I did a questionnaire. I did a sampling to the kids that are currently here, asked them all kinds of questions, and it was all through Google Forms, so they were able to answer, and I can identify who was saying what. But the things that came out was, were things like, do you ever feel like quitting school? And of course, you know, everybody had different responses. What can the school do to help you, encourage you to stay in school? The things that came up were like, let us choose the classes. That came up over and over. We want more choices. Well, I know we give them choices. We counsel with them when we give them degree plans and things like that. So then I asked them, you know, what's the best thing like about school? And there was all kinds of responses there, and then what are your plans? High school, go to college, go to work? Everybody had different responses there as well. So that's got me thinking about, so they wanted, who is it that said this? And so I went and dug a little deeper, you know, what is it that you mean, choose classes? You get to choose classes. Well, they do, but they really don't, because if they are still in ESL, they're limited, they can't go into CTE classes. So what can, what can we do? So we paired up, we partnered with the workforce, and we had the workforce come in and talk to them about just different things. The first thing was how to have a good interview, writing a resume, interviewing. They did skits and role-playing. The kid, this was very well received, and so this was kind of a pilot year for us. I asked for four sessions. We did two in the fall and two in the spring, and the kids really enjoyed it, and the teachers did too. So we're inviting them to come back. We're going to partner with them again next year. And that's Wesley. You'll need to keep an eye on him. He's going to be on the football field next year, so just wanted to let you all know that. We also have a parent information night. Our parents, we have a different education system in the US than we do, than they do in a lot of countries. The grading system is different, attendance is different. As a matter of fact, what we offer in middle school and high school, a lot of countries, you have to pay to go to school at those levels. So we invited the parents to come in, and we had a parent night. So we had all kinds of departments represented, people that were within our district and outside of the district, including Temple College, workforce, and things like that. That was very well received, was one of our first face-to-face meetings that we had with parents, and they, it was very well received, and the parents came and asked lots of questions. One of the places they hit a lot was CTE, because they wanted to know, they didn't realize what we offer here in Temple. And, and you know, how do I get into those kinds of classes? What do I need to do? Then all of a sudden, oh, that test that I take with the reading and the listening and the speaking, that all of a sudden became important, because you tell them how, you know, try your best, so you can do this, and it really doesn't, you know, measure, or doesn't really click until you see what it is you could be doing. So if you, and so once you pass that test, then you can move on and do other things. So that became a reality for them, a kind of a checkup for them. So we did that for the middle school and high school kids. We targeted grade seventh through 12th, because that's the area of our dropout rate and the area that we also are graded with, with graduation rate.
So I just want to clarify what Connie said, that ESL students can take CTE classes. It's just that if you're in an ESL class, because you haven't passed your TellPass or you need extra support for language acquisition, that takes up one of your electives. And so where a student who is a bilingual student not in an ESL classroom, they may be able to have an extra elective, and our ESL learner who's new to our school district, new to our country, they have that extra support. It's the same as a bilingual student who hasn't passed their ELS.
That's exactly right.
And we put them in a trailer, an English, English 1 trailer, an English 1 prep class to provide that extra support. And so what Connie, I think what Connie did was really innovative and amazing, and we got lots of poodles and brags from TEA as we talked to them about our plan, because she just decided to infuse CTE within the ESL curriculum. So, you know, because those, our students can take those classes, but how can we keep them connected and see that this ESL class is just as important as any class? Because a lot of them think that this is not an important class, which is the conversation she was having with parents as well. Hey, you know, that TellPass class, you know, TellPass assessment that we need you to get them passed, you know, just like your English 1 assessment to graduate, you need to, you need your, you need to show that you have established this level of English acquisition as well. So she infused that in them, got them excited about the ESL class, and then we began to see that growth. And you see those three years' work, though, on average, three years' work and growth that our students did at the secondary level. Secondary students don't love these extra electives sometimes, but they need them. And so I think she was really innovative in the way she used CTE into that class. But they can take these.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the clarification. In addition to that, we also partnered with different departments, even within our district. So we did a lot of, I did a lot of home visits and phone calls and robo-calls and mail-outs and trying to get the kids to come into this, these events or just coming to school. We also have some staff at the high school and the middle schools that are lifelines or are my lifelines. We, you know, we have kind of like hidden rules, you know? After the kid's out two days, we need to call. We can't afford for them, you know, to just think, you know, who, whether they're going to come back, and we don't know. And if you don't know, can't get ahold of them, somebody in that classroom will know them. So we do what we can to try to get the kids to come back to school. We also have, on our website, we had this parent night, kind of a notebook. It's an interactive notebook, which is really kind of cool, because it was a collaborated effort. Ms. Najibi Castillo helped put this together, but every tab represents a different department. So if you have time to kind of peruse it and click on it, it's very informative, and it is in English and in Spanish, so that's, that's something that we're really proud of, and it's on our website. We also had, for the littles, we had a parent involvement night, and that was so very well-received. We had a concert on the plaza, and we had, this is a little couple, it's a Colombian couple, they live in Virginia, but they have their own little band, or they put concerts for kids, and I don't know how to make this play. Oh, I think I just did something not right. Just give you a little sampling of what they did. It was just really neat, the way they got the kids involved and the parents involved, and there's an emphasis with language and literacy. That was longer than I thought, but you get the gist. This was a really, a fun night for our, for our parents.
There was really, that was really good attendance there, too.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
And it was not even a really, really hot day. I was really worried about it being, you know, sweltering, but it was, you know, everything worked out really nicely. So we were actually, it's day two, I believe, of our summer school, so we had very little time to turn this around as far as invitations and getting the word out, and, but we, our teachers did a really good job. Our summer school principal, Mr. Placencia, did a really good job, too, getting the word out and things like that for that attendance. We also implemented in the summer school, we did the backpacks for parents, and so we had parents come in and got backpacks on how to help your kids at home through the summer. We, and we had really good attendance for that, too. We were very fortunate to not only add, we have, every year, we have, we're mandated to have pre-K and kindergarten summer school by the state, but this year, we were fortunate to add grades one through five. And so this is just a sampling of, we also keep track of their progress, their listening, speaking, reading, and writing progress, and we give them a pre-test and a post-test. So this, this went on for four weeks, and believe it or not, our attendance didn't, did not slope. Normally, they kind of get tired, and you know, after a couple of weeks, they don't come, they were strong the whole time through. So we were very proud of our attendance there. That's a snapshot of our kids. I'm not sure how Mr. Placencia had that picture taken, but it was pretty impressive. We had some really good resources that we used, research-based resources, and some teachers that were very, very phenomenal. So, and as you can tell, the bottom half of the little, of the little kids that, you know, normally come, and we had t-shirts ready for them, we were, we were ready for them, and then when first grade through fifth grade, you know, were added, they didn't get t-shirts, but they were so excited to be at school. Every day was a new experience for them. At the very end, they even had a water day, and that was, that was a lot of fun. And this is the slide that just tells, tells me that by law, I have to brag on our program, so here we are. But I do appreciate your time. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? You do have a lot to brag on. I'll omit that.
Yes, we have some really good teachers, really good teachers.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Connie. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Next item, C, finance facilities. One, consideration action with respect to order authorizing the issuance of one or more series of Temple Independent School District unlimited tax refunding bonds, approving an official statement, authorizing execution of a paying agent registrar agreement and escrow agreement, establishing procedures for selling and delivering the bond, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the bonds. Mrs. Vaden.
Hi, good evening again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. As you are aware, the district has several outstanding bond issues that the community has approved graciously over the years. Every so often, as interest rates and maturity dates align, the opportunity comes to refund or refinance those, and we have one of those opportunities to tell you about tonight. With us, we have Jennifer Ritter, our financial advisor, and Bark Fowler, who's our bond council, and they're going to walk us through the details.
Jennifer, welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you guys. Okay, so you've got a screen. Oops. There we go. You're probably used to seeing this, some version of this graph from us. This is a 10-year history of interest rates. We're looking at doing a short deal. Usually, those are 20 years, but this is actually 10 years. So you can see there that darker line represents municipal bond yields over a 10-year period. We're on the far right-hand side. 10 years ago, there is on the left-hand side. So you can just sort of visually see that we're kind of at, not an all-time low in terms of interest rates, but pretty low. Interestingly, that little spike that you see there, kind of about a year ago, if you're looking at it, is when COVID first started and interest rates went kind of crazy for a while, but since then, they've trended down with a couple of increases. You can see there in treasury yields now in the earlier part of this year, as people start to worry about inflation. So for the time being, interest rates are very low. We don't know what's going to happen in the, you know, next couple of year or so, but at the moment, we do have very low interest rates, which kind of brings us to the next page here. You have an opportunity to refinance portions, or actually all of the remaining Series 2012 bonds. Those were actually a refunding of a prior issue, so it's a pretty short issue. It actually matures in 2027, but they currently carry interest rates between 2% and 3%. Each year is different, assigned to that, but between 2% and 3%. If we were to go out and refinance those with today's interest rates and today's market, the interest rate would drop from a 2% to 3% to a 0.75%. So there's a pretty big difference between 2% to 3% and 0.75%, which is where those savings are being generated. And as you can see there, it's a pretty short little deal on the far right-hand side, but if we were to take current market interest rates of 0.75% and drop them in there, we'd save a little over $400,000 on this sort of short issue between 2023 and 2027. So not huge savings on a percentage basis. It's a little over 5% savings over what you're currently paying. This is one of those issues where it's currently callable starting in February of next year. That means that we have, under IRS rules, 90 days prior to February to go ahead and execute that, so that kind of, if you count backwards, puts us into right about now, when we can start to look at this and take advantage of it, which is why we're coming to you now. We couldn't have done this before. The earliest we can really do it is kind of later on this year, and we'll talk about the timetable here in a moment. So again, these savings are not going to be, maybe not even terribly noticeable in terms of tax rate. It certainly represents less than a penny in terms of savings, maybe even a quarter of cent in terms of savings, but it's one of these sort of belt-and-suspenders things where either you can save the money, or the investors are being paid a higher-than-market rate. So we certainly just want to bring these opportunities to you when they arise and let you all decide as a board what you want to do to proceed. On the next page there, we'll talk about timing, assuming that you want to go ahead and move forward. Having some issues. Okay, okay. They're sort of halfway there. I guess they have a handout. So assuming that you decide to move forward tonight, that would start the process, and we'd actually start the process of applying for the permanent school fund guarantee from TEA, which gives you the AAA bond rating essentially of the state of Texas and sort of the best interest rate on your bond issue, and then circulate the documents, the offering documents, the official statements. We'd start preparing those and be in a position to visit with Standard and Poor's to update your bond rating in September. All goes according to schedule. We would want to price in early October. That's again, with this 90 days of the IRS, as we can't, we can't refund prior to 90 days in advance of the February 1st call date or redemption date. That puts us in right in early October for the earliest that we can price. So this is basically, assuming that you decide to move forward tonight, we would do this as quickly as we could to make sure that we lock in savings before anything changes in the market. So this would be the timetable, and then there on that next slide, let you address the sort of, there you go. Thank you. The action tonight is what we've done on prior refundings for the district. Because of the market sensitivity in terms of timing for a refinancing, you're able to delegate pricing authority from the board to staff, essentially, to price on your behalf. It's called a delegation refunding. So essentially, what you're saying is that Jennifer and Kent and Callan, we don't have to price on an actual board meeting date. You go out and you price the best day in the market for us, and then if the savings hits the parameters that we as a board say we want, they can go ahead and lock in on your behalf. So in this case, the pricing officer would be the superintendent or the assistant superintendent of financial operations. They would have the authority to sign off on this for you, assuming that the parameters that you met or that you designate are met. This is a little bit different, what we're showing here, than what I just showed in the previous couple of slides in terms of numbers. This says the aggregate principal amount will not exceed $84 million. The reason there is that you have a couple of other bonds that we're not necessarily recommending at the moment, but you have some other bond series that are not currently callable. The call date has not come yet, but the IRS will let us do something called it, these are tax. it, these are tax-exempt refinancings, meaning that investors don't pay any federal income tax on the interest earnings, so you get a better interest rate. Because the tax bill that was passed in 2017 took away your ability to do refundings unless the call date had occurred, and I don't want to get too much into the weeds here, they changed that, so we can't do what's called an advanced refunding anymore on a tax-exempt basis. If you recall, some of you who are around, because of that, in twenty, at the end of 2017, we actually rushed and did with this board, an advanced refunding there to lock in savings prior to that tax bill going into effect. But we are still allowed to do these on a taxable basis in advance of the call date. So you have some bonds actually, that have call dates that occur in 2025 and 2026, so several years down the road, that have a pretty high interest rate, that currently are generating savings, but there's a lot of, if we were to wait on those, the savings would be even greater. So we've been visiting about it pretty extensively with staff to see if that makes sense to move forward on those. At the moment, we feel like it's kind of best to wait, because you're giving up a lot of savings by taking advantage of those now, but we're including that in this order, should things change in the market, should those savings become even greater, so that you could take advantage of an even larger refunding with this action tonight, should that be beneficial for you to do so. So you're delegating that to your staff to decide on your behalf, and we can get into that more if you want. But essentially, the goal here tonight is that we know this current refunding that we showed you currently makes sense, it's quite frankly, just sitting there, the call date will come up, if you don't do it, you're just going to basically be losing opportunity cost of what you could have been saving. The other bonds, the call date hasn't occurred, but what we're saying is, give us the opportunity, should things in the market, interest rates just really drop, and this becomes, you know, kind of a great opportunity that that's included there. So that's why that number is bigger. You're also delegating the refunding must produce savings of three percent. As I mentioned, we're at five percent, you could raise that a little bit if you wanted, but we typically put three percent in the document, and then let staff decide if it makes sense. When interest rates rise, it's like gas prices, they kind of rise overnight, so we don't want to miss out on this, because we were at, you know, if we say five percent, we don't want to miss out, because we were at four-point-nine percent, and we didn't have the opportunity to move forward. But you can change that number if you wanted to increase it. Final maturity of the bonds won't exceed twenty-one, or 2043, which is the final maturity of all the bonds that we're looking at here, and that this order is in effect until July 12th of 2022, so a year from today. So this isn't obligating you to do the refunding, any refunding, it's simply saying that should it make sense to do it, you have the opportunity to do it, there's no cost to do this. If it doesn't work, we simply put it back on the shelf, or wait until July 12th of 2022, and if it doesn't work in that time period, we come back to you in July of next year, and ask for another year to go forward, and watch this as it moves forward. So again, you're not obligating yourself to do something, I would say it's really kind of giving yourselves the opportunity to save, should it be advantageous to do so. So did you want to add anything, Bart, in terms of the order itself? I missed...
Sure, not much, but... Again, for the record, my name is Bart Fowler, with McCall, Park, Kristen, Horton, it's a pleasure to see y'all again, and serve y'all as bond counsel. Not to restate everything Jennifer just said, but one thing, over the next twelve months, since this is good for a year, we do have the ability to do multiple series with this one document, one series of bond issue, more than one series of bond issuances. So if the tax-exempt series makes sense on the schedule Jennifer indicated, we can take advantage of that one at that time. If three weeks later, for some reason, the taxable piece that she mentioned, those call dates that are out in the future, it makes sense, the market drops quite a bit, we can do that one as well under this one order without coming back to the board. We can take those, advantage of those savings for the district, whenever the time allows, if the market does allow for that. So there could be more than one bond issuance from this, they would all have to meet the minimum parameters that Jennifer just described, but just understand that there's a potential for that to occur. It's probably not very likely that, we don't expect that, but there is a chance that we could do more than one bond issuance, again, saving money each time.
Okay, thank you very much. I think it certainly makes sense, taking this opportunity, even if it saves us a half a cent, I mean, that's a value to the taxpayer, that's definitely helping the district, and this gives us the opportunity to go forward if the opportunity arises, so...
Mr. Posey, I'd like to add, you know, what this does is gives us options.
Options.
It gives us options, doesn't lock us into anything, but by having that minimum three percent betterment, if you will, we wouldn't do anything unless we at least gained that.
Right.
So it gives us options, doesn't obligate you all to anything, and rest assured, too, that whatever we would do will be in, with a tremendous amount of discussion with these two individuals here. Callan and I have spent quite a bit of time over the last few days, especially earlier today, with Jennifer going through some of these scenarios, and that's kind of brought us to where we are today. We'll continue to look at those, and these two always provide good direction and advice, and sound legal advice, and so, again, will, just gives us options, we'll report back to you later, and we'll let you know, if you approve that, we'll let you know kind of what we've done, and if it's been good to move. Obviously, anything we do too, we'll be discussing with Dr. Ott, and he'll be, he can present that information to you all also.
Okay.
Are there any further questions, members? I believe Mr. Gaines has a motion.
Yes, I make a motion to order authorizing the issuance of one or more of the series of Temple Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, approving an official statement, authorizing execution of a paying agent registered agreement, and escrow agreement, establishing procedures for selling and delivering the bonds, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the bonds.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thanks again for y'all coming up and presenting this opportunity for us. Item D is student services, we don't have any items. E is board committee reports, the facilities committee update, there was no meeting held in June 2021, and the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 26, 2021. For the policy committee update, there's no meeting held in June 2021, and the next meeting will be held Wednesday, July 28, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. There have been no more further business tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.